All right, Kathy, you can let me know when you're ready to roll.
I'm ready. Tyler is not here.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to continue to wait for him or let me just start.
Wait for another second?
Another whole second?
Couple of seconds.
Okay. Here he comes.
Recording in progress.
All right, we'll go ahead and reopen our meeting for October 20th, 2021, the Wasco Board of Wasco County Board of Commissioners. Welcome to everyone this afternoon. We only have one item on our agenda this afternoon, and that is the Strategic Investment Program Agreement and Resolution. And for those of you that don't have it or haven't seen it, so all of this information is on the county's website under the Wasco County Commissioners. So all the information that we're seeing is available to you as well. And as Matthew will cover, we have covered this for the most part before. So this is not the first time we've covered this information. And we're going to cover it today. We're going to get some presentation from our staff and then we'll have questions and then we'll have a time of public comment if people want to make public comments. And then the commission will chat about it and consider approving this agreement here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler and Matthew. I don't know who wants to, I don't know if this is a full Matthew thing or Tyler, if you want to start it off.
Well, let me just give you two seconds, mostly of appreciation for the negotiating team that has diligently worked on this agreement for, oh, man, I can't even remember how many months, but it's been a bunch. Through all of the things that we've been through together, I just really appreciate the work and the professionalism and the dedication and focus that the rest of this team has has put towards getting to this point. And I wanted you to hear that publicly that I really appreciate all that support.
Who who is on that team, Tyler?
So it was myself and Rich, Mayor Mays, City Manager Julie Krueger, Commissioner Steve Kramer, Matthew Cleaves is our Enterprise Zone Manager, and Jill Amory is our Assessor. And I would be remiss if I didn't include our attorney, Kristen Campbell, in that process. So again, my sincere thanks for getting us to this point. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Enterprise Zone Manager, Matthew Cleaves.
Thank you, Tyler. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So yes, as Tyler mentioned, this is the culminating work of many months of hard work and due diligence to craft what's been included in your packet today. To start, there is a memo briefly summarizing the Strategic Investment Program under the Business Oregon Department itself and the shared interest between Google, the City of the Dows, and Wasco County in utilizing a strategic investment program in a subsequent agreement for development of the privately purchased and owned piece of property that we generally calling are generally known as the former aluminum site north of I-84 and on the west end of town here. Now, I want to stress that this SIP Economic Incentive Agreement is a wholly separate agreement from other use agreements and other necessary approvals that Google or any other similar type development would need to secure in order to move forward, such as land use agreements, water agreements, state agreements, anything that that may be relevant. Those stand on their own and will not be circumvented by the SIP agreement that's before you today. I've also included a brief summary. As mentioned previously, we've had quite a few public meetings, solicit input, and inform the commission, the council of the proposed initial terms of the agreement. This primarily was back in February where we had at least two meetings at the commission, two meetings at city council. And much of the work over the past few months following those meetings was taking the bullet points of the term sheet that was presented at those first meetings and translating them into a, you know, 25-page legal document that all sides were agreeable towards, making sure that we have dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's with what triggers what, and we were all on the same page. It also took some additional time to get all relevant parties, such as the fire district and others, in alignment and understanding with with the SIP agreement itself and the associated projects or proposed projects, and what each of the different components really mean and what they what they will do. And the only substantive difference really between the original term sheet that we presented earlier this year and a similar bullet pointed list in the agreement included in your packet today was a change from a 20-year window to a 25-year window, which allows Google the additional time needed to complete up to the two proposed projects, each valued in the hundreds of millions of dollars. I'll stress though, again, that this change from a 20 to 25-year window does not affect the 15-year exemption period or up to maximum 15-year exemption period that each of the two proposed projects could receive. But I'll take a step back there from that substantive change and kind of just go through, again, the key points of the agreement as it stands to date. So summarizing those key points, the agreement included in your packet covers up to two distinct SIP or data center projects. Again, it provides that total maximum 25-year window for the two projects, each with its own maximum 15 years of partial tax abatement before returning to full tax. It details a one-time $3 million initial payment to the city and county for each project during construction. And these components are what differs, makes a SIP agreement different than an enterprise zone agreement in many ways. But it's the state prescribed taxes tied to the total investment of each project. So there are three distinct levels where a portion of the development is taxed as as normal based on the total investment of the project. The other key component is a state prescribed community service fee, which is a formula based on 25% of the tax savings a development may receive capped at 2.5 million. And then there's the guaranteed annual payment or the GAAP. And the GAAP is based on a percentage of total property tax equal to the combined payments of the statutory property tax that I just described, the community service fee, and then the GAAP payment itself. So the GAAP for project one is based on 50% of property tax due if there was no SIP agreement. And the second project is based on 60%. And I'll draw your attention to Exhibit A of the agreement, where we included an example calculation of how this would play out and how we would determine what the GAAP payment would be in a particular year for a particular project. And all told, combine these three components, the statutory taxes, the community service fee, and the GAAP payment will not be less than 3 million in a given year. The agreement also includes a transfer of approximately 35 acres of property from Google to the county and a right of first refusal, giving the city and the county the option to purchase the property, not the 35 acres, the developed property from Google, should they cease operations for up to 10 years after the completion of the final abatement, along with a potential credit for each developed project to help offset any potential demolition or redevelopment costs. Also included in your packet and what we are really looking at today is, in addition to the agreement itself, is a resolution approving this agreement. There's a resolution, as I said, for consideration by the County Commission at today's meeting and another one for the City of the Dows at the upcoming council meeting this Monday on the 25th. And the next steps, should these resolutions be passed by both the city and the county, is for Wasco County to formally request determination by Business Oregon on these applications that Google would submit. And that item be on an upcoming or the first meeting for the County Commission in November, should the resolutions pass by both city and county. Once we've made that request and we've submitted, Google has submitted an application to Business Oregon, they have 21 days to initially consider the application. Now, if the respective resolutions pass and this process continues to move forward, there will be continued work on determining the distribution of the community service fee and the process for doing so. This is something that we went over somewhat in depth at the previous presentations. But essentially, the distribution of the community service fee will ultimately be decided by the city, county, and 75% of the relevant taxing district authority per OAR 123-623-1950. And in that provision, we can locally determine the distribution of the community service fee if we reach agreement within three months of Business Oregon's determination on the projects. This distribution can also be amended moving forward through the years. But if we don't reach that agreement, Business Oregon has the authority to set that distribution for us. Currently, it's the recommendation of the negotiation team that the community service fee be proportionally distributed to all relevant taxing districts according to the sum of their levy, excluding any kind of bonded indebtedness. But that ultimate decision will come with the approval of the SIP agreement by the city and county and the process in the next few months. And finally, once a positive determination or if a positive determination is received by Business Oregon on the SIP applications, staff will work with Google to finalize the transfer of approximately 35 acres of land to the county. And with that, I'd be happy to pause and answer any questions that you may have after reviewing the key components of the SIP agreement and what passing these resolutions mean and subsequent next steps. Chair?
Thanks, Matthew. I thought, Rich, I don't know if you're interested, but the mayor's here, so I thought I would see if he wanted to say anything. If so, it'd be a great time to do it, Rich.
Thank you, Chair Hagie. No, I have nothing to add other than what Tyler and Matthew stated. I felt it was an honor to serve on the negotiating team. I think we negotiated as good a deal as we could have and a deal that stacks up very favorably with other SIP agreements throughout the state. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any of me. Like Matthew said, we have this on our agenda for this coming Monday, excuse me, Monday night, October 25th. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate other staff, Dave Anderson being here if there's questions about water usage or water issues. So, all right, with that, I will open it up to the commissioners at this point in time for questions of staff or anybody that they want to ask questions of. Go ahead, Kathy.
Surprise. Matthew, where are you? Gosh. Oh, there you are. Okay. Just, I have this question. Could you please, you know, the community service fee is of great interest to a lot of community members. Could you please just define what that exactly means, 75% of taxing district authority?
Yes, that's a good, that's a good question, and it's good to make that distinction. We are not looking at 75% or what the statute means is it's not 75% of the total number of districts that we have, but 75% of the total authority. So if we had, I want to think of a terrible example, but if we had 10 taxing districts, we're not talking about 7.5 taxing districts. We're talking about 75% of their tax authority, which could be held by a few districts depending on that breakout. So that's an important distinction to make. It's not the total number of taxing districts, but their taxing authority.
Okay, so in other words, those that actually collect the most taxes would be in that's those that collect 75% of the taxes of all the districts, right? Okay, okay, thank you for that. I don't have any more questions, but I did want to really just echo what folks said about thanking the team. Thank you so much. Special thanks to Commissioner Kramer for his work for our board. And I just wanted to call out a really special thanks to Dave Anderson for the meeting where he really explained the water issues to the public. And there was great discussion and question and answers, and I think that was really helpful to me as I was getting those questions, not only that I could punt them to you, but it also gave me a better understanding because obviously that was of, it is of concern to to citizens. So thank you. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. I'm assuming, Steve, you have any questions?
No questions at this time, Chair. Thank you.
All right. I have a question. I'm not sure if it can be answered, but between you, Matthew, and maybe Jill, and it has to do with the the this the prop, the amount that goes on the tax rule. Okay, so when and it's really about the value of the investment. So for example, what what we've been seeing with the Google projects since the beginning actually has been whenever the question about what is the value of this investment, there seems to be a very consistent number. It's always 600 million. So my question is, how is like in this case, you know, when we're talking about, you know, we really need to know what the value of that investment is because what what the what the proposed agreement says is we're going to ultimately give 50 or 60% of what that value is, what the normal taxes would be. The question is, who determines and how do they determine what the value of that investment is? Because even in regards to whether or not they, how much of it goes on the tax rolls. So I think if I'm correct, and Matthew can correct me, but there's a threshold. If it's over a certain amount, then $100 million goes on the tax rolls, and if it's under a certain amount, then 50 million goes under the tax rolls. And in this case, in the Exhibit A in the agreement, it shows 600 million, which is the same number we've seen from the very first project. And so my real question is, how is the how is the value of what they're investing in these projects in this day going to be determined? And is it, how can the community like know that that's the value? And if, does that question make sense? Okay.
I'm happy to take that one if you want, Matthew, and then you can jump in. You're muted, Matthew.
Thank you. I thought I clicked it off. If I may make a brief comment on the front end, Jill.
Please, please, yes.
So Commissioner or Chair, what I'm hearing is kind of two questions is how is how is the value determined not only for that initial taxable portion, but also in in determining the 50 and 60% as part of that formula? And my comment that I'll hand it over to Jill is that the on the on the front end, the state has set up those three levels, which I just wanted to detail briefly. And so if the total investment is 500 million or less, the initial taxable portion is 25 million. If the total investment is 500 million to a billion, the initial or the taxable portion is 50 million. And then the total of development cost is over a billion, then the initial taxable portion is is 100,000, 100 million, I'm sorry. And so that's that setup, that's that prescribed structure that was given to us by Business Oregon, by the state, I should say. And I'll turn that over to Jill to talk about how those values are determined.
Scott, it would be the same method. These properties are appraised by the State Department of Revenue. It would be the same method for valuation. So initial with new construction typically is construction cost is is typically very equal to what the value is. As the years go by, depreciation affects that value, obviously. So once that is determined, that's where what Matthew was just talking about, that initial taxable portion will be determined. And then that's what the tax will be based upon in those following years. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. So is it a reported, like, for example, the 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 company reports what their costs were? And that's what is determined to be the cost is?
So we've, we, as you know, since I came aboard, we've been working with both the Department of Revenue and with Google, and we're getting adequate access to plans, to site visits, to valuation, to verifying the data that's reported. And so it's it's really a collaborative effort, yes, mostly reported by the entity, which is typical of every industrial property in the state of Oregon.
Okay, that's fine. It's just the the thing that's always very interesting to me is that literally from the very first project that they did here, the amount of their investment is always identified as $600 million for each project. And as you know, the projects are radically different in terms of the scope and scale of them. So it's always a little confusing, you know, if I was somebody in the public, I'd be like, why is it always 600 million? You know, why isn't it, you know, 499 million or, you know, 875 million or whatever the number is versus the 600 million number?
So I think that there are two two things there. One, that's the number that is quoted by Google. Like you say, we all know that, we all hear that. The information and the value, the real market value that's on the roll for each individual property, each individual building, personal property account, M and E account, machinery and equipment is public information, and that value is on our website, just like any other property in the county. So you can watch that from year to year. It doesn't come on at exactly 600 million. It doesn't stay at exactly 600 million. That varies with depreciation, with reinvestment, all of those things. It is just as the value of your home changes every year.
Yeah, it's just the determining the value of these kinds of investments are pretty complicated. It's not, I mean, it's it's one thing to support construction costs, but it's another thing to value them, and it's that could be quite a difference. So you're you're confident that the that the the value of this investment, when at the end of it, we will have a good understanding of it, whether it's 600 million or more or less or whatever it is?
And the state of Oregon has a really experienced team. They've been doing this, you know, when we first started this, it was new across the state. They have a lot of experience now. They're well-versed, and we have better access. And we have a more collaborative relationship with Google that provides information when we ask for it.
Great, great news. Very good. No, I answered my question. That's fine.
Okay.
Commissioners, any, so I'm assuming, are there any, Kathy, do you have any other questions? Okay, Tyler, did you have anything you want to add at this point? Okay, I don't think we have anything else. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and open it up for public comment and see if anybody here has public comment, wants to make a public comment, and we'll go from there. So if you want to make public comment, I don't think there's anybody on the phone that I can see. So you can just unmute yourself and tell us who you are and go from there. Anyone? All right, Dave Jacobs?
Unmute. There we go. I'm unmuted now, right?
Yep, I can hear you. So if you could state your name and address for the record.
David Jacobs, 3350 Salmon Road, the Dells, Oregon, also the Board President for Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue. So I guess I had a couple of numbers-ish questions. I'm not sure who wants to answer to them, but maybe for Jill and or Matthew, when when I look at Exhibit A and I'm looking through the numbers, I guess I'm wondering why you didn't factor in compression for Measure 5, which could be significant as far as the number that Google does pay in taxes, and it would affect all the other numbers moving forward.
That's not meant to be an estimate of tax, Dave. That was just an example of how the algorithm would work in Exhibit A.
So am I correct in assuming that Measure 5 would certainly affect their payments or the compression would affect their actual tax payments to the districts?
It could. It's like any other property in the county. It could.
Okay, and then you're using a tax rate in your example of 1.1, which would be $11,000, close to 18 for those type of properties. Is that is that a true to say?
It's not. It's not based on property, David. It's geography. So the tax code area that the property is located in will dictate the tax rate. I don't have in my head yet. We just certified the tax rule. I don't have in my head yet what the current is. It was 18.1802 for the prior year. So it's based on geography and the tax code area therein, the service districts that provide service within that taxing district.
Right, and I looked at that particular property. It's in the $18 range. So that, again, that would significantly inflate these numbers that we're looking at in Exhibit A.
Again, again, this wasn't meant to be an estimate of what the tax would be. This was an example of how the algorithm would work.
Understood. I'm just trying to get a sense of as a district chair, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of what it means to our district.
So we did provide in the presentations to city and county previously, an estimate that first year, and I provided that to you. You should have that. And we can talk, we can talk more. I can send that to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's that's all I had. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, David. All right, other comments, questions? You could unmute yourself and say your, say what you want to say. All right, it looks like we don't have any other comments. We're going to be going, going, gone. Okay, so appreciate that. Okay, so now I think I would go back to Matthew just to kind of lead us through this. So we've got your presentation. We've had some questions and answers. We got some public comment. So next step for us is?
Yeah, so the the next step is consideration of the resolution that was included in your packet for the County Commission and a decision point on passing that resolution and effectively approving the SIP agreement. Following that, should the commission so choose, and as Mayor Mays mentioned previously, we'll be headed to city council for similar resolution. And once, if and once those two resolutions pass, we'll we'll move forward with submitting to Business Oregon and starting that whole process that I described in my presentation.
All right, thank you, Matthew. All right, Commissioners, if there are no further questions or comments, I would take a motion.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to echo Mayor Mays and Mr. Stone's comments about the team. A lot of hard work went into this, and it's kind of the odd man out with all of this, and I'm going to say it again today. Said it all along, if we don't have this agreement signed, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be spending the money. And and so I think today is the pivotal piece of this. And again, to my teammates, thank you for all the hard efforts. To the Google team, I see Mr. Goodhue here. I'm not sure if anybody else from the Google team is here, but thank you all for the participation and the hard work that we put into it. So with that, I would like to move to approve resolution 21-010 in the matter of Design LLC, Google LLC Strategic Investment Program Agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second discussion. Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to. Yeah, I just want to, I just want to note for the folks on the call today. You know, we've been talking about this, as others have said, for a really long time. And it, you know, I obviously don't have a lot of questions today because I've probably met with most of the people on this call, had multiple meetings, had a lot of opportunity to get my questions answered to truly understand what's before us today. So I wanted to be sure and put, put that out there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Kathy. Okay, very good. I was, I was going to make a comment just that, and this is just a point of clarification, I guess, or a comment. Approving this obviously has to go through the city and then the process through the state. But then, if not as or maybe more important, Google has to decide to do this project. So as we've seen in the past, you know, it doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow. I have full expectation that we'll see it happen sometime. But I think as anybody that's kind of watched Google over the years, they make investments when they need to make investments. And sometimes they don't make investments when they don't need to make investments. So it doesn't necessarily mean this project's going to happen. I think our hope in some ways is that it happens soon, and then we can move forward and they move forward, and it's all great. But I think everybody needs to understand that just because we're approving this doesn't necessarily mean something's going to happen. So, all right, if there's nothing else, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. All right, passed. Onto the city. I'll come in, come in your way, Rich.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, we have one more, one more motion here to make. I move to approve the 2021 Oregon Strategic Investment Program Agreement between the City of the Dells, Wasco County, and Design LLC, Moraine Industry LLC, and Google LLC.
All right, thank you for that, Steve. I did notice there were two. I didn't know. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. That one's particularly interesting for those of you that have followed this all along because it actually has Design LLC, which was the very first kind of entity that we were playing with, and then it was Moraine Industries, which was the second one. And finally, Google, which was kind of overseeing both of them. So interesting that all three of them are here, even though they're kind of all the same. All right, a discussion on that motion. If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. All right, pass that one as well. All right, it's all coming your way, Rich.
Thank you, County Board, and I appreciate the negotiating teams' work again and hope to see you all Monday night on the 25th at 5:30. Thank you.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, Matthew, for the presentation. And Jill, thank you for the information. Really helpful to kind of have a good understanding of this. And it's important for the community to understand what's going on. And I think, you know, David asked a good question. And the example in, with the agreement is not an estimated tax statement. It's just an estimate of how you can figure out what those numbers might be. And, you know, Jill did do some work on that before, and we have a good sense of what it's going to be. So, all right, Tyler, is there anything else for the good order that we need to address at this time?
I think that wraps it up. Thank you, Chair.
All right, well, I appreciate everyone being here. Thanks, Google, for being here. We certainly value you as a corporate citizen in our community and look forward to growth with you as we grow as well.